Well, the Newport City Council meeting to order from Monday, September 7th, 2018, 6:30 PM, City Council Room. All members of the City Council are present. Others include Jim Johnson, our clerk treasurer. The next item is to approve the minutes of September 10th, 2018. I would entertain a motion. A motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second discussion on the minutes. Then hearing them, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, ayes have it, motion carries. Next item is comments by members of the public. We only have one gentleman who signed up, Mr. Partee.
Last week, I asked somebody a question about this guy that's going up and down Main Streets, Panhandling. And I was told he's hiding under the First Amendment. I think what the city has got to realize that he is walking out in front of cars and stopping people and asking for money or hollering at them. He's down here by the neck of building and he's banging on cars. He stopped my grandson's father, great-grandfather, which is 70 years old with a bad heart, and called him an effin', got in his wife's face and scared him, scared her, got the kids going. He jumped in front of a car up here in front of the dollar store. He's cornering women over here by maple fields and scaring them. Something has got to be done, Paul, or somebody's going to get hurt.
I know the police are all aware of what's going on and they are working within what means they have. Panhandling has been ruled by the Supreme Court that it is allowed. Orc, um, Burlington has been asked to repeal their ordinance. Grattaborough just repealed their ordinance because panhandling does fall under the First Amendment rights. Now, what's happening with that gentleman? Yes, he has been reported to the police and I believe he has been picked up a few times. But as far as the panhandling, we cannot say-
No, no, no. The panhandling, that's fine.
But the police are aware of what's going on and they're doing what they can within their realm. Not everybody is reporting everything to the police either. The chief is asked that if you are anybody who is feeling threatened by the gentleman, call or stop in. That's the best you can do. They just can't go out and arrest him. They have to have people report it. Because I know he banged on my car and he surprised me one day. I didn't report it because I basically told him calmly, "I don't have any money to give you," and he went away. And so, there's nothing that can be done as far as the panhandling. And if someone is frightened, they need to contact the police department. That's the best that can be done right now. And I know different agencies are aware of the gentleman and they are, various agencies are trying to work to help solve and work through the issue. I know I've had many people stop me about panhandling, but you can't, you can't have any ordinance-
No, no, panhandling don't bother me. It's just, he's jumped out in front of my car, he's banged on the side of the car and I just got. He's just jumping out in front of cars and some, the other person's going to be blamed for something this idiot's doing.
So-
Because this money ain't buying gas.
Something like that, you have to call, report it to the police.
All right, as long as they're aware of it and they'll do something, I don't mind.
Okay. Moving on. The next item, we have a presentation, uh, it's Casella Landfall Expansion Presentation. First, we're going to hear from Charlie Prado and Henry Cole from Dump. And then we're going to hear from Joe Gay, Craig Hindle, Jeremy Labby from Casella. And so, when I, when I was asked to have this on the agenda by Charlie, I wanted to have Casella here too, because I thought, have fair, balanced presentation.
Yeah.
And so, all right, you-
You can pull up here.
Yep.
I just, I don't, I don't have a rhythm. I'm going to do most of the talking, Henry's a little bit.
Nothing new.
Does this guy have to be here?
Yes, it's public.
So anyways, the reason I contacted you, as you're aware, first of all, I grew up as Dump, standing for "Don't undermine natural resources," that's what Dump stands for. Henry is kind of the founder of the group. He'll shake his head no, but he really is. And a group of people had got together before I got involved. I read a few things about what the group was doing. I remember having an issue with this, with the lined landfills, 30 some odd years ago when I was mayor. And I wrote to Henry and said, "I'd like to be involved." My biggest issue back then was, I was opposed to it, it's on record, I'm sure, somewhere if you dig back far enough, 30 some odd years ago. It was one of the questions I asked at the time was, "So these lined landfills or baggies that you want to put in the ground over there are good for how long?" It was like, and they told me 20 years. So, that was 30 years. And I believe that that's coming home to roost a little bit now. So, uh, the, my main goal tonight was to inform you a little bit about the Monday night meeting. Unfortunately, we set the meeting up and had it all attended when you also had a council meeting and I know you can't be anywhere else. I did send you all my five-minute remark for the initial presentation down there and think the web, or the link to the NAK TV two-and-a-half-hour meeting video. So hopefully some of you have looked at it, because I'm not going to give you my five, 10-minute presentations. But I'm going to, I'm going to kind of put it in a nutshell where we, where we came, where we arrived at. First of all, I don't, I don't know if you're all aware, if you've read the stuff, you are, but one of the concerns is trash. We're, we're receiving trash from almost all of Vermont and New Hampshire, New York, New Jersey, Connecticut, Rhode Island, Massachusetts, and Canada. And those states, what they do is, I, I received a run list. They call it document dump, about 300 documents from Agency of Natural Resources. And so, that's where I got my information. What they do is they show every month how much trash came from, and they list all the places in Vermont where it comes from, and then at the end of that, they list the out-of-state ones. And on the out-of-state ones, they don't give you the city, they just give you the state. But they do tell you what's in it. And the stuff that's in it is, is all pretty harmful stuff. It's asbestos, it is, these are their, their statements. Contaminated soil, contaminated construction debris, coal ash, sludge, and metal alloys. That's some of the, that's what most of it is, if you read down through it, that's what most of it is. So we have a bit of a problem with that. We also brought out at the meeting that 12 million gallons of leachate are currently being extracted from Casella's in Coventry, of which 4,800,000 gallons is treated through our municipal wastewater treatment facility. As of, that was last year's figures. 5.7 million goes to Mount Pili, the rest goes to the flood. There are other areas that have been treated. The leachate, once it's treated, supposedly safe leachate is dumped into the Clyde, which goes into Lake Penfremay. We also confirmed to the state that no other plans anywhere in the state for garbage are in the works for the Agency of Natural Resources, the state of Coventry. They don't have any other plans, they're not looking at anything. We have urged them to start looking. And I'll, I'll tell you why. What we're opposing at this point is Casella wants to almost double the size of the landfill over there and get a permit for another 22 years. But we were told at the meeting that probably it's only going to be 10, but their plans are for 22, but they said no. Our group, uh, we got some quotes from the EPA that states that basically all landfills leak and all liners will eventually deteriorate. That's very scary thought. And what's happening right now in Coventry apparently is they're starting to leak. So, um, and what's in the leachate is the scary part, because they have found PFO, PFAS and PFOAs in the, in the, in the leachate, leachate. That's the stuff that you guys are treating. It was detected in a recent test that was done. There is an online portion of landfill that Casella deals with, and that part is leaking into the environment and they're trying to collect it. And that tested at 116 parts per trillion for PFOAs and the acceptable amount for drinking water is 20. So almost six times. And, um, the lined landfills, which have, are getting older, are starting to leak, and the leachate in them that's leaking out is 6.7. It's under the 20, but it's still coming in here. And we're doing 4,800,000 gallons. The Department of Environmental Conversation did a study. That's where a lot of this came from. I have a copy of the study here. And it was basically done because of what was going on in Bennett, Southern Paris. Everybody read about it. Everybody's wells were contaminated. It wasn't from a landfill, it was from something else, but it was PFOAs. And that was the scary material that was in there, the same stuff that's leaching out of Coventry. So, um, they did two studies. They did one for groundwater, landfill groundwater, and surprisingly, they didn't test Coventry in that, in that test. They tested only closed landfills. And the results, and I'm going to give you a one sentence, because it's, you know, this thing explains things. PFAS was found in groundwater at all sites, both above and below the standard. Coventry was not tested. We're probably the biggest one in the state, so I'm, I can, we've probably got some problems. What they did test in Coventry was leachate. And in that test, I'll, I'll just give you, Table 2 provides a summary of the results. Basically says, "In general, the results showed elevated levels of PFOA and PFOS in all samples and for both masses with the highest concentration at NEWS VT, which is the Coventry landfill. The active landfill and most recently closed landfill ran off, ran off of more than." So basically what they're saying is, they tested the leachate and the highest concentration was right. And now they're looking to expand, get another 22 years and double their costs. We have, we have a problem with that. So, our concerns, and we brought them up at the meeting, for Newport, for immediate, our area, was that the municipal wastewater treatment facility was treated. I did a lot of research, our group has done some research and found out that, well, you know, these things weren't ever designed to treat the kind of chemicals that are going in the landfill these days. So, I, we asked the state, the head of the State Department of Solid Wastes, this is his quote, "Municipal wastewater treatment facilities can treat organic part of the leachate without any problem, but the chemical part is challenging. Problem is the costs are mostly prohibitive. We're not exactly sure what the costs are, but we'll have to look into that, I guess, now that we've heard, heard from you guys." So if you watched the meeting, that's pretty much paraphrases of what he said. That's pretty scary thought. And he's coming right up telling you they can't treat for the chemicals, and the chemicals are what no one worries about. PFOAs do cancer-causing carcinogens, like earth effects, they affect fish, they affect a host of things. Nothing, nothing, nothing good about it, all that. So, there are wells that collect the, the leaching from the, from the plant. I mean, they have drainage systems and all kinds of wells and all kinds of stuff, but the, but some of it still gets by. According to the EPA, they're, they're not going to be able to treat them all. And that, although they may get most of it, that all wells will eventually fail us. So basically, we're looking at a problem, may not be in my lifetime, but it's going to be in somebody's lifetime. We're going to look at what we're leaving for future generations. So, our Canadian neighbors were, were there. There's a group called Mephisto Magog Conservation, Inc. It's a 1,200-member group, mostly from Magog, Georgeville, Sherbrooke, that whole area. They've been around for a long time. They're really upset. They're very upset with the city of Newport for not doing the testing. At some point, the testing stopped. They just fired it back up now, but some people are screaming a little bit about it. For quite a few years, the leachate coming, that's coming up into the lake, the Clyde, I think it was created for, I think, I, I forget what year it stopped, it's been a while, 2008 maybe. And they started back up. We asked them why, we asked the Agency of Natural Resources why that was, they said they didn't know. But the Canadian neighbors are really upset. They've been working on this for, they were in this group, not in this group, but they were in this fight before we, we got here. We also have Jen Dugan, Duggan, from the Conservation Law Foundation. And I think their protest, again, prior to us, and she was at the, I mean, is probably part of the reason why the permit currently is being on hold to do further testing. And our concern with the testing and the, and the law foundation's concern is that the testing is basically done by Casella. The, the samples are collected and a firm that Casella hires does the testing. And then those results are sent to the state of Vermont to be analyzed. I asked the state of Vermont why they would allow that, and they basically said, "Well, we're going to assume they're, they're honest and due diligence and, and doing the testing." And I said, "Oh, that's, that's fine, but I don't think I'd want Monsanto giving me the samples for GMOs that they put in their food, telling me that it's safe." I just feel a little uncomfortable with that. And I hope you guys do too. That's how that works. The firm that they contract with to do the testing has been doing it for a long time, as far back as I can, could go in the details that I can. So they're basically, a hired employee, a hired consultant, whatever, but they're hired employees. We want third-party testing. We want access to the wells, we want access to the leachate prior to and after. It goes into the, before it goes into the wastewater treatment facility, after it comes out. We want testing down by the Black River and the South Bay, and just test wall quality. We want it done by a third, in Penfremay. And we're hoping that you're on board with that. We don't, we're not really here to stop totally the expansion. We, we realize that we need to handle our own trash in our own backyards. We just don't think we should be the dumping grounds for all of Vermont and all of North East Canada. They've got four years left on their permit, plenty of time for the Agency of Natural Resources, Casella, Chittenden County, Rutland, Massachusetts, Connecticut, New York, New Jersey, to do their own, get their own landfill. And if all we're hauling is our local garbage and we do it quick, we probably wouldn't have to open anything. We're going to have a problem with what's there as our concern. So, now, Casella, I know they're here tonight. We don't treat Casella as the enemy. If you look at what the Agency of Natural Resources requires of Casella, Casella's doing a pretty good job. They do everything that they're asked to do. Problem that we have is what the Agency of Natural Resources requires them to do. They allow them to do their own testing. We don't think the levels are good enough. They're okay with 20 parts per billion of, of poison going into our lake. We're not. So that's, that's what our fight is. And what we're hoping is, a couple of things. Newport City become active in the Act 250 permit, once they give them a draft permit, which they probably will. And look at things like the environment and the safety of the citizens of the city of Newport. There's three areas that Newport deals with, but not everybody else has to deal. Blood, you're dumping this stuff in the Lake Penfremay. You're making enemies of your neighbors to the north, and I would suggest you call them. At least have a meeting with them so they know where you're coming from. Two, air pollution. Everybody here, been down there, I'm sure you've got complaints from the smell of it down. They do have a, they do have an air permit from Solid Waste, but it only controls oak. When I was talking to the air quality guy down at the Agency of Natural Resources, he admitted that there were some pretty harmful chemicals that escaped. They tried, they tried to capture them, all but they gave up. I asked them if they were doing air testing on Lawson Ridge, Mephisto Magog views, down by, on the other side of Newport, just up above the dump, up above the liner? And they said no. So we're asking them to do that too. We're going to be asking a lot of that type of stuff. So Newport has, I mean, you guys have three different areas where that's affecting. The other, the other one is the groundwater. So you've got the lake being polluted, you've got the air being polluted, and now stuff is starting to leach out of the online landfill and, and even the line. And they want to extend it. And I, if you guys, I don't have to tell you where it sits. It's on the edge of the Black River and the South Bay, the watershed. How they ever allowed that to happen in the first place, I have no idea. Our group is going to be fighting it. We hope that you join us. Love to have a, a public stance from the city of Newport on where you stand on this permitting or expansion. That's it. Want to add anything, Henry?
While you covered it, I, if you don't, I'd be glad to try to answer your questions if council members have questions right now. You're waiting for Charlie? Do you want to wait till, do you want to wait?
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, does Mr. Prong have a, had a copy of his handout that, that I may have?
Handout? I didn't have a handout.
Well, I'm not your handout, but what you're reading from.
Well, I'm not reading, anyway, this is what I'm reading. I just, just notes, just a note, so I make sure I kept, caught everything I wanted to catch.
Okay.
You can talk to me anytime you want.
No. That's not a gentleman.
Well, thanks for having us. My name's Joe Gani, I'm an engineer for Casella. Jeremy Labby is the landfill manager, oversees the day operations. And Craig Hindle is, is that third-party consultant that we hired with samples of groundwater. So he's our hydrogeologist. In fact, there might be some questions about groundwater, leachate, so forth, so we'd have to bring them along. So certainly, there's a lot of things to clear up. So we're here to, well, we didn't prepare any presentations or anything, although we do have that. We were here just over a year ago and gave probably an hour's overview of the basics expansion, what it was. And so, we could certainly do that, but I think we can just focus on maybe what some of the concerns are. And hopefully, make the council feel a little bit better about what's going on there as far as the expansion. So, you know, we're happy to answer any questions specific to that which you have. I want to first say that, you know, we've certainly always had a very good relationship with the city of Newport. We've, we see you guys as a partner in everything that's going on up here. We have a very transparent operation. We have landfill oversight committee meetings twice a year that the city is invited to. Laura usually comes to those. We have our Canadian friends, our neighbors also attend those oversight committee meetings twice a year. Some of the same folks that I understand maybe work at this meeting on Monday, that understand what we do very well and come down and participate in what it is that we do. So I think maybe, the other thing I just want to point out too, was this past Saturday, we had an open house at the facility. It was very well attended. I think there was upwards of 400 people there. We were given tours all day long of the facility, a lot of good questions. I think it was probably better attended this year than it has in the years past, which we feel is very positive. Maybe it's a result of some of the, some of the press we've been, we've been seeing. So I applaud the community. A lot of folks from Newport came up to see really what was going on and a lot of positive feedback, you know, on what they, what they learned. So I oversee all the permitting and the environmental compliance, construction, engineering for the site. Jeremy oversees all the operations for the site and all the levels of safety that, you know, operations provide. I can talk to all the detail on the environmental compliance and why the landfill is not leaking, is not having an impact on anybody's drinking water. And Craig can support, you know, discussion on, on all that, especially as it relates to groundwater itself. Any questions?
I'm just going to let everyone know, just for the record, we do, we are permitted to treat 15,000 gallons a day of leachate. That's what we're permitted at waste water plant. I asked you for these figures before I came. And financially to the city, just so that we're transparent, it's 183,000 a year, just so that everyone knows that we do get that amount of money from Casella to treat their leachate. So I just wanted that, so that everyone knew that information. I think one of the biggest complaints I received-
About a day?
15,000 gallons per day, right Pedro?
Yes.
Am I correct there?
Exactly right.
Okay. So that, so that, you multiply that, it's about the 4 million number that you had per year.
We're about 130,000 gallons a month.
I think the biggest thing that I know I get complaints on, which I guess has gotten better, has been the overs. The west side of Newport at times has been real, I mean, it's been bad, especially this time in wintertime. I get a lot of complaints. And I tell them to call the number, and I don't know if they follow through and call, but I've actually smelled it myself, you know, whatever. And I know what happens warm when the air's heavy and the gases can escape, whatever. And so, they tend to float towards the west side of Newport. You probably have had complaints like that too. You probably have had complaints like that too, being on the council. So, that's one of the biggest things that I get complaints on. Personally, I guess I have a philosophical issue. It's not so much with you folks, it's with the state of Vermont, not looking to the future. That's my issue, and I found out they have no plans even after 20 years. That came right from people in Montpelier I spoke with. They have absolutely no planning for, after this 22-year permit. And that's what I'm philosophically perturbed about, really perturbed with the state of Vermont. And I've been, I haven't been a fan of the elastic ban either. Basically, it was philosophical then, where the state had no plans to create regional landfills. That's my issue, where we're accepting, or you're accepting, not we, but you're accepting everything from all over Vermont outside of Vermont. And that's my biggest, I think, beef. It's not, I know it's not you, it's the state and their lack of foresight, in my opinion. I mean, for years, there was a permitted landfill in Williston, but of course, they had the power to stop it, those people. I shouldn't say those people, but they, there was a permitted landfill over there, and no sand, closed-down sand pit. I know it was permitted, but then they decided not to do it and have everything come here. So, it's philosophical with me, because there is a mentality around the state, out of sight, out of mind. It's good, just send it to the kingdom. It's out of sight, out of mind. And that is my big issue with the expansion. And I have concerns about the PFOAs, and I have concerns that that liner in 50 years or 100 years doesn't burst and contaminate the lake. I'll be dead and gone in probably 50 years. But, you know, what I'm getting at is I just have concerns about the long term of that. And one thing Charlie didn't mention is, our drinking water for the city of Newport comes from that area. We have two wells off the Coventry Road. And if those ever were to be contaminated, we'd be Upper Creek without a paddle. So, those are just some of my concerns, and, you know, a lot of it, I don't know how the rest of the council feels, but I think I'm really enjoying the state of Vermont with their lack of thinking.
If you go back to the late 80s, the state of Vermont did set up an act where the different districts were supposed to have their own landfill. And at that time, it was Palisades, and they were just developing the one down here in Union Farm, which was kind of funny to me because they called it Waste USA.
Yeah, it was a Canadian company.
But I worked on the design of both Waste USA and Palisades for renewal of their program back then. And I worked up for Palisades to do it, their sand pit had been stopped. My problem back then, they came to the city and they wanted the city to take their leachate, and I was on the council back then, and we said no. And probably said no because the guy sat there and said, "I can send it someplace else just as cheap." But we were doing injection back at that time. And I was wholeheartedly felt that if we were gonna have a problem in our system, there would be a hot spot for the leachate that we were gonna take. That's always my concern, that we're gonna take this leachate. And back then, we talked a lot about pre-treatment. Do you do any pre-treatment at the plant of your leachate?
There is no pre-treatment.
But there's that possibility, right?
So, I was involved, I'll talk a little bit about the history of waste in Vermont. You're right, in the late 80s, you know, there was 80 online landfills around the state. And the state said, "Look, you know, we gotta stop putting trash in online landfills because it's contaminating the groundwater." And frankly, today's waste is much cleaner than yesterday's waste, if you will. The used oils, the batteries, the metals, you know, all the, you know, all the very hazardous, you know, types of substances are now all removed from the trash. So, we don't have that type of trash mix today. And, but nonetheless, the state said, not only Vermont, but New England and across the east coast, it took the west coast law to catch up with it. We gotta start with liner systems on these landfills. And the first one was in South Burlington and filled. Williston permitted a lined landfill. They also operated their online landfill, which is right adjacent to the Willenski River. Built a lined landfill, pretty small, nine acres, filled that up. Randolph came along, they permitted about a 10-acre landfill. And realized economically, they weren't gonna be able to make it work because they just didn't have enough trash. So, they ended up contracting with Hallvers to fill that up faster and close it. And it was at Randolph that we looked at leachate pre-treatment. Now, I say we, this was before my time with Casella, this was with a consulting firm that designed Randolph. And I was also involved with Morteown, Palisades, with its design before my time with Casella. And the pre-treatment didn't work. It helped establish a lower biological oxygen demand, but didn't help with, you know, anything else. And then, as time went on, it became better understood. Landfill leachate was pretty new, right? We didn't have liner systems. So, this wastewater was pretty new. So, as time has gone on, we understand it better now, not considering PFAS, because that's emerging contamination. I don't think anybody knows exactly what, you know, what that involves. And so, the wastewater treatment plan has said, "Yeah, you know, we can handle leachate from a landfill. It's a wastewater, it's not a hazardous waste," and began taking leachate and treating it. And it's the right solution today for landfill leachate. We do always want to look to forms of pre-treatment or total treatment. We do that. We just sent a five-gallon bucket of leachate off to Texas to have a company look at it to see if we can do some treatment on-site. So, I think as time goes on, we're gonna, you know, work to try to find better solutions. Technology improves to treat the leachate, for sure. So, we've been taking leachate to Newport since 2010, and, you know, it hasn't disrupted anything in the plant. We've got, I think Pedro can attest to that. In fact, in times of the winter, when nutrients are low, the leachate provides nutrients that the plant needs. So, sometimes in the year, it's actually benefited the facility. So, you know, I think that it's important that...
No, go ahead, I have a question for Pedro, I have to keep going.
I just, I think it's important for the community to understand how highly regulated this facility is. You know, we have a double liner system. I went into all those details over a year ago, I don't know whether it's necessary, but I'm happy to. We did bring some samples. And so, we can monitor, you know, anything that's collected on that first liner, right? And we can also collect anything that's collected, if it leaks through, on the second liner. And then below that, we have an underground system underneath the entire footprint of the landfill. The secondary liner was to ever leak, which it's not. We know that, it would be in the underground system, which we sample once a month. And if there was detection, we can collect that. So, the landfill's not leaking, you've heard that it is, it's not. Landfill liners, how long do they last? So, we've had them for about 30 years, right? That's as long as we have them. We have excavated down and welded new liner to old liner. It's 30 years old and it welds together with no problems. It all has, everything we welded to has the same strength as it did when it was new. And, you know, because the liner systems are new, you know, we don't have a whole lot of information other than what could be done in laboratories to try to extend the degradation of a liner system. Most studies have been done, and the studies conclude that the liner can last well over 400 years. So, it's, you know, it's possible that the landfills are gonna, the liner systems are gonna last 400 or more years. Even if everything was to completely fail, and it's not, it's not gonna happen. It doesn't just all of a sudden revolve in one day. It's, you know, it's 120 feet around, it's on a very stable foundation, it's not going anywhere. The natural soils here at the site are so tight, they're so impermeable, that, you know, we would be able to detect that, monitor wells and leakage, and have time to remediate that. But, you know, I'm very confident that we're never gonna get there. The liner system's working, the state knows it's working, they're involved with all the construction and the monitoring of the systems, and it's secure, the landfill is secure. There is the online landfill there, right? And there are impacts around, adjacent to the online landfill. Not unlike any other online landfill in the state. We monitor that twice a year, and contamination's not getting worse. It's very stable and not going offsite. We sample upriver and downriver, the Black River, you know, way up past us and way below us. Never once had any impact on the Black River through chemistry. As far as the testing goes, we heard that Casella hires their own person or does their own testing and uses their own labs. None of that's true. I mean, it is true that we use third-party, we do pay that third-party to sample, but, you know, we welcome the town or anybody else, frankly, that wants to split a sample and take it to their own lab, no problem. We'll let you know when we're sampling. That's part of the transparency that we've always had at the facility. You know, we give people tours all the time. You know, the oversight committee meetings, I think that the city participates in, have been very productive. People can ask questions, people can come see what we do, you know, from the construction of the liner system to how we close it for leachate. What I missed, Craig?
I think you didn't miss anything. I would just reiterate that if, that I agree with you entirely that the liners are not going to burst. They may slowly, 350 or 400 years from now, there's some seam, small seam may start to leak. This is the best, this is a great location for that eventual possible leakage to be safely contained. Because the landfill is built in a clay bathtub. There's a giant hole was dug into the clay, and then the multiple liner system was installed in that. So, even if the liners leak, which I don't believe they're going to, there's a natural clay bathtub, and the groundwater is gonna be caught by that natural clay bathtub. And there is a piped collection system in that, at the bottom of that natural clay bathtub, that the water can be collected from and managed as leachate. So, this is one of the safest places for a lined landfill to be. So, there are unsafe places, like in Morteown, where it's sand over bedrock. That's a risky place to put a landfill. There are places out in the Midwest where it's, the landfills are put in sand with a high water table. That's a risky situation because the sand is very high permeability and it allows any leakage to go quickly. Here, the leakage is gonna be contained by the natural clay. And then, that liquid that's contained in the natural clay has a collection system, a piping collection system, just like an underdrain under your house, that can capture that liquid and it can be managed safely. So, I think this is a very safe location.
Pedro, when it comes to testing, we're thoroughly, you have to test or send samples to the state, right? For testing?
Well, we don't, I guarantee go over the state, we multiple different laboratories.
But we are testing with our plant?
And 90% of our tests go over the state. Some go to Endline, and we just use the company area, the South Endline, on the nature, do what the state requires, do a proper testing.
And the state has regulations?
Yes, they do.
Since we're treating leachate, we have to meet those regulations?
Our last permit, the permit that we have right now that we're operating off, was updated in 2009, it was in 2004 when it was given to the city. We haven't received a new permit since 2009. In 2009, we did the last wet test that the state required us to do. Since then, the state hasn't required us to do any wet test, and they always, they're the ones that send us stuff and say, "You need to do this and this and that." Allison just sent me a thing about a month ago and said, "Before we give you the new permit, we're up for a new permit." She said, "We want you to do a wet test." So, we just, we want to sample a wet test, and we haven't got the results back yet.
Okay. I was just curious on that.
We use mostly the state, but there's some stuff, like our sludge goes to Endline. There's some places that in Endline or the state won't do, so we have to find other laboratories and all that. And we did the wet test in, and we placed a proposal, we get one with the South end in here.
The reason why I was asking, I remember the big push a few years ago, trying to get people not to flush their prescriptions down, because he said the plant couldn't treat, you know...
No plant can treat prescriptions.
Prescriptions, well, that makes me think of leachate a little bit, you know? That's gonna be worse than prescriptions going down the system, in a way.
Pedro? We de-water, right? And the sludge, does it go to the landfill?
Yes, it does.
So, people gotta understand, when he gives us a number, right, of getting the leachate, it kind of offsets that, putting the sludge into the landfill. So, if we didn't take the leachate, what would our sludge disposal be?
We charge 4 cents a gallon for leachate. I don't know what they charge us for the, I think it's comparable price for the sludge, but I have to go a little...
Yes.
But the arguments, you know, when we take their, they take our sludge, we have to de-water.
So, there's more to the cost than the money just taking the leachate.
I think it's important to know too, the council, to know that Pedro could call me up tomorrow and say, "Hey, you know, we're doing an evaluation, or we want to take a break from leachate, and we would stop taking the leachate tomorrow." It's completely at the discretion of the city. So, as you guys are evaluating what's coming into the plant and what's going out of the plant, you know, if you start to maybe assess where there might be problems or where there isn't problems. We 100% support that. You know, Pedro's going through an amendment now, Pedro, the city is going through an amendment for their discharge permit, and we'll cooperate with that as well. You know, anything you can do to help on that. Also, I'd like to add too, that I meant to mention this earlier, and while I know it sounded like somebody was asking for a vote tonight, and I don't know if that's where this city council's headed or not, but I just want you to know also that we've got support from the Northeast Kingdom Solid Waste District. We've got support, of course, from the Town of Coventry, a long-time supporter.
They get massive amounts of money. They'd be foolish not to support you. I mean, that's my political editorial comment to that.
You know, I think that those folks, so those folks have been in the landfill, they understand what we do. And, you know, like the open house, you know, they know what we do, they know the protections to the environment. So, they're comfortable with the whole town agreement that they established with us. You can say it's all about money, but I bet your guests, if there was a problem with the environment, they'd have a problem with that.
How do you monitor what comes into the state? Because we do hear about all this nasty material coming into the state.
Great question, so let's talk about that.
And that bothers me a lot, to be honest with you. I think we should handle our own Vermont waste and not get all this. I know you're in the business to make money. You know, you have shareholders, so you have to get all this stuff coming in, but...
Yeah. So, certainly some of it is about economics, right? But, so let's talk about that. So, the state produces about 500,000 papers, the state produces 500,000 tons. We take about 75%, rough numbers, of the state's waste. 25% of the state's waste goes out-of-state. And, you know, depending upon the year, 2017 was a very big year for us to take out-of-state special waste. There was some soil projects in Massachusetts that we did take, some large soil projects. And that was sort of an anomaly. I think you'll see the numbers go down this year. But let's see, you know, let's see, you know, by the time we get to the end of 2018. So, we do take some out-of-state waste then, that's a fact. So, that waste is what we call special waste. It's waste that's evaluated on a case-by-case basis. Now, similar to the groundwater monitoring and testing, let's say you have a gas station in Massachusetts, and it was determined that your gas tanks leaked into the sand, into the soils beneath it. Say the Massachusetts says, "You've got to clean this up." So, hire a contractor to take it out of the ground, to take that contaminated soil, put it in some cans, some trash, haul it containers, or trunks. Then, the soil is sampled. And when it's sampled, it goes to our special waste, internally. We evaluate it to make sure it's not hazardous waste, not a lethal waste, and it's a waste that we can manage at the site. In other words, Jeremy's involved, and is it, you know, is it something that... In other words, Jeremy's involved and is it, you know, is it something that has too much odor? Is it something that is maybe just a little bit too liquid for us? And then if it's determined that we can take it safely, then we send an entire package over to the agency of natural resources, all the testing, and they review every single load of waste material that comes in from out-of-state on a case-by-case basis as we do. So they say, Casella, yes, it's approved, or no, it's not. And then, so if it's approved, then it could come to Coventry, it could go to one of our other landfills, one in New Hampshire, some in New York. Comes down to economics in most cases. So there is a service we provide to customers in New England to take out-of-state special waste, but it is a small percentage of the waste. It's evaluated on a case-by-case basis. Every single project from out-of-state is evaluated to make sure that it's not hazardous and it's not a liquid waste.
Are council members, have anything? I know I've been kind of asking a lot of questions. I didn't know if other members had questions.
Mr. Mayor, just one more question. You said you had to patch one of the liners. How did you determine that it needed a patch?
Did I say that? You said you welded it.
Yes, I welded it.
Oh, 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 so I see. So that was actually in New Hampshire, my landfill in New Hampshire. And the first lined landfill in New Hampshire was in Bethline. And the old section of the landfill, we connected to, which was liner that was put in in 1988 and expanded the landfill in one particular direction. So, but to do that, to do that, we had to excavate waste. We actually went into the sumps in the landfill, which is the low spot, as we already mentioned, the bathtub. So we had to excavate about 50,000 yards of trash to expose these low spots so we could allow the leachate to continue to drain out. So not only did we go into a liner system that was put in place in 1988, we went into the heart of the liner system where all the leachate sits before it's removed and were able to get those successful wells.
Okay, so it's to expand and not repair.
That's right, it was to expand the landfill.
I just wanted to follow up just briefly with some concerns that I heard Henry and Charlie express about the danger of leachate. They were referring to some reports on lab analysis of leachates that were done, including News Vermont. So this is a, this is a report from just a couple of months ago, July 2018, on the PFOA, PFAS. It's an update of this and it talks about various constituents. And just an important sense here is that, yes, landfill leachate contains these chemicals. It's the case all over the country. News Vermont doesn't have any special leachate in that regard. The important thing is to understand that the agency developed, this is the agency of natural resources, developed guidelines for PFAS concentrations in leachate. And to determine whether pre-treatment would be required of leachate due to high concentrations of PFAS. And in none of the landfill leachates that have been sampled so far, this report says, the landfill leachate do not exceed the most stringent ambient surface water criterion for PFOA and PFOS. As such, there should be no adverse impact to the environment or human health. So all the, all the leachates that have been analyzed so far are well below the threshold the agency set that they would have required pre-treatment of leachate. So it's, in that same report that he was quoting from, is this sort of language that continues to say, yes, PFAS were found, but they are at a low enough level so that pre-treatment is not being required by the agency. And again, this is a public document.
By a few levels of magnitude.
Yeah, a couple orders of magnitude. I want to clarify that.
Now, what's being done to do more to control the odors that the leachate will get?
Yeah.
I heard you have a giant Febreeze system.
Yeah, we do. That's one of the, that's one of the control devices, yeah. So let's, so let's talk about that. So we, so we have an active gas collection system and, let me just back up one second. So again, it's important for us to know, if you smell a landfill, it's important for us to get that complaint quickly so we can get right out to the location and assess what it is. You know, we've had circumstances where we've had a complaint, had the state nearby and we've gone and it ended up not being us. So, you know, I'm not saying we don't smell because it's, let's face it.
I detect a difference. I mean, I've driven to the airport, I've driven around and I know the smell that comes from your facility.
Yeah.
Pretty much.
Fair enough.
I drove by the one in New Hampshire quite often, the big one off with three in New Hampshire there that used to, that's not yours, I don't think. But that, I know, so I know, and I had a chance to tour your facility to get all the odors.
Okay, good.
A person who retired drove me around and said, this is the odor here, this is the odor here. So I know pretty much the odors and people call me, you know, I tend to try to drive out or I tell them to call you right off.
Okay, that's good.
So I'm just, want to know what's going to be done with this huge expansion and to control the odor because that we know will be a factor.
Okay.
Well, Jeremy, if you have a chance to talk, would you like to? So I think odor increasingly so is becoming one of the issues that landfills need to manage properly, right, and they need to manage with state-of-the-art equipment. I think, as you know, it's been really hot this summer. And when you go take a trash bag out after it's really hot in a camp for a week and you lift the can lid, it doesn't smell very good. And it doesn't take very long for it to not smell good. Imagine you take that, you bring that to a transfer station, it gets in a trailer, then it has to come to us. So we're required to manage material that can smell and it will smell, but that's the nature of the business of waste that's generated by all of us as humans, right? Whether it's wastewater treatment plants, sludges, or municipal solid waste, the household trash we produce, those are typically the ones that really have odor. And then on top of that, we have landfill gas, which, you know, I'll get into the comment about the hazards, you know, emissions and all that, we'll give it a little bit later. But so on the part of odor, I think odor's been, this summer, probably the most important thing that we've worked on. We've installed four different odor control systems and I think they're really helping and they're, the whole point of odor is to make sure that we try to treat it, one, with wastewater treatment plants, sludges at the source. So we're working with wastewater treatment plants. We have an organics division in the company and regardless of what people think, Casella does a whole bunch of things. I mean, we're the biggest recycler in the state of Vermont. In fact, we recycle, like as a percentage basis, we recycle a lot of material, if you look at recycling rate. Our organics division, most people don't know what we do, we manage materials, not just sludges and landfills, we also make compost, we land apply stuff that we try to reuse, we don't want to waste things. So you know, Casella's mantra is not throw things in landfills, it's to try to find a good solution to the waste that we produce, right? And that's the mantra that drives our business. But there is material that has to be managed and it tends to be very odorous. And people's odor threshold keeps going down. I mean, it's funny because I moved to this area from Maine and I've only been here for six months. I grew up in northern Maine and I've been in Bangor for many years and I worked for Casella there and it was the same thing, except there wasn't a lot of dairy farms. So we didn't have the land application odor four times a year, so. But it brings me back to my roots because I grew up working on a cattle farm, so. Anyway, so what we're trying to do is first off, treat at the source. So it's really hard with MSW because that comes in from neighbors and residents, but things like wastewater treatment plants, they have a set operation, they make set batches of wastewater treatment plants, sludges, we can try to combat that odor, right? So we're, we're putting in odor neutralizing systems with the cooperation of these plants at the source. So that, it'll be less of an odor that comes to our site. So we've really been working hard on it this summer, trust me, I've put in, I don't know how many hours on odor this summer. When it gets to site, we want to manage it accordingly. So we've actually put spray systems and we've worked with four different odor control spraying companies. They produce like an industrial grade type Febreeze and everybody's got their proprietary, you know, we're the best thing since sliced bread mantra. And we did our own Boyantrons, we didn't want to take them at their word. We found the one that actually works the best, two of them actually. And so we develop these spray systems that'll use this biodegradable product on the working face, right, to neutralize odor as the waste is being placed, as well as around the facility to try to capture any odors and may migrate offsite. We've also put in a 24-hour complaint hotline. We had, in the past, when I got here, it was kind of like someone texted this person or called this person, whatever. We have a hotline that we have for anybody to call 24 hours a day. The way it works is they ask you a set of questions, right, so we can kind of diagnose what the odor is, you know, is it, are you smelling, does it smell like trash? Does it smell like sulfur? What is it smelling, right? Where are you located? You know, do you want us to go visit your site? Do you want us to call you back and talk to you about it? Questions like that, so we can help residents. We encourage everybody to call that hotline because we don't know, we're not, we're patrolling often around the area, but we're not there 24 hours a day because we just, I can't be at everybody's house 24 hours a day, unfortunately, right? So we put that in place and that automatically contacts a list of people and it'll keep calling and calling and calling until they finally get someone who's going to respond to that odor complaint. So we have that in place that we encourage people to call in case there's any odor. And then we do site tours, right? We want people to know, I was just talking with some residents who live up on Austin Ridge and I'm trying to get to know everybody and, you know, they were like, well, we'd love to be kind of the canary for you so that we have this quid pro quo relationship for you. So we ever smell, we want to call you and that way you can get right on. I said, I love that idea, right? Because we don't want odor. We're not one of those guys like, eh, whatever, you know, it's just fine, we're just going to put the trash in there. That's not how we run a business. You know, my hope is that come before you, five years from now, when you say, yeah, I just, you know, I haven't smelled a landfill in the last five years. That's great. I mean, that's our goal. Will we get there? Well, once every time we'll get there. With regard to gas odor, the cool thing about landfills is they're like a modern-day natural gas producing facility, right? So when you, when you pull natural gas out of the ground, it comes from organic matter that's decomposed for who knows how long, thousands of years, right? And it's dinosaurs and trees and whatever else and it's, it's decayed in the absence of oxygen. Well, landfills do the same thing and they produce methane as a byproduct. Methane is a greenhouse gas, right? And it's a very, it's a very light gas so that it's a harmful greenhouse gas, but we can collect it. And if you go to that site, you can see we're putting things like synthetic plastic cover over the whole thing, like a giant Ziploc bag to contain that gas, also to prevent leachate from being generated, which we can talk about. We have regular surface scans. We actually walk the face of that landfill with a specialized meter to see what the risk for emissions is to make sure that we're collecting everything. We take that gas after we're collecting it and we generate electricity for over $7,000 a month. So we're creating, we're taking that waste and putting it to work and making an energy out of it, which is, actually that was one of the cool things about the open house is people got a chance to walk in the engine plant, see the engines in action. And so we also have an air license that regulates the flare emissions, right, coming from, if our flare's running or the engine plant has their own air permit and that's, that's not the solid waste folks, that's the air real that takes care of that. And everything is very, very stringent and monitored. We get out there and we tune these collectors at least monthly, right? We have this giant computer, it's not giant, it's small now, but we have this really sophisticated computer that measures our methane, our carbon dioxide, our flow, our temperatures, our oxygen at each of these locations and we can adjust things accordingly. So we've gone from an operation that's kind of like, well, yeah, I think there's gas being produced, to we know exactly what's going on in every section of that landfill and we can actually pull and maximize our gas production and minimize what's going out of the landfill. So we've gotten really sophisticated and we did the same thing with leachate. You know, we have 24-hour, seven-day-a-week coverage and monitoring of that leachate. I can log in 24 hours a day and I can see what's going on at each of those sumps, how much is being pumped, if there's any issues whatsoever, if there's any alarms, we get notified. It's tremendously different from what you guys envision or what we used to do back in the day when it was just a whole ground. So as far as odor goes, that's what we're doing and we're going to get better. You know, that's my goal and that's, that's our pledge. We are going to continue to push the envelope and become, we want to be the company who's helping invent the odor control devices that we will use tomorrow, not the one who's like, hey, you know, after it's been tested for 10 years, we'll try and make. You come to us with ideas, well, what about trying this? I'm all ears. I love people who have ideas on what the next best thing is for odor control because it is part of our business, it's not going away and we need to manage. And I think we're making great strides and I like to hear, you mentioned that you were having odor, but it has gotten better and that's, that's the news I'd like to hear. I hope that when I talk to you maybe a month from now, you say, it's even better.
It was how it is over the winter.
Well, that's exactly right.
It was worse in the winter as you get a cold air inversion of the landfill and it can't, you know?
Those temperature inversions can really wreak, you know, kind of issues. It's funny, I always give this analogy, one January day, I stepped out of, stepped out of my house and my neighbor, my closest neighbor was like a thousand feet away and it smelled like my grill was on. I'm standing there, I'm like, someone's grilling, and it smells like some barbecue chicken here on my deck. And I walked away and it wasn't anywhere around, just right there. These temperature inversions can take a little bit of odor, move it and sit in a place, right? And so that's where we need to be really cognizant of weather patterns. So we have weather stations that will monitor weather. We're working on developing these odor control systems that will actually respond to the weather station. So if the wind direction changes, it'll change what's happening with the odor control system and that's what we're looking at for next year's spend. And that's, I'm a nerd, I'm an engineer too. So these kind of cool things where we can use technology and harness it to make what we do better are what we're hoping to do.
I'm not a nerd. Please don't nerd. Sorry. But another one, innovative things that we're doing, I think we mentioned a year ago, one of the elements of our permit is a geothermal heating system for five greenhouses and we're excited about that. We're taking, we're capturing the waste heat from waste heat composition, it'll be able to heat greenhouses adjacent to the landfill for a user. So we're excited, I've had some conversations with State and Shop, Food to School, we think with something like that, we can probably, you know, develop. And so, you know, that's an innovation that came from Casella employees. I mean, this is the type of thing we're looking for.
Doesn't it really answer, Charlie here raised about air pollution, you're saying the monitoring, if you could maybe address that?
You want to go for that? You want me to go? Yeah, I'll go for it. So, yeah, so there's two air control permits at the site, one for us, for our flares in the landfill, and then there's one that Washington Electric has for the engines. And so let's talk about the flares in the landfill. Jeremy mentioned that the air pollution control division monitors emissions from the flare and those flares are designed to meet state standards. If they're operating, they're destructing the gas to the percentage that's required by the state, 98% destruction. But I think more importantly, the landfill is also regulated, the emissions off the landfill itself are also regulated. And so we're required quarterly to walk the entire surface of the landfill on a predetermined grid and a person walking the landfill with a flame ionization detector, that's pulling in ambient air and looking for releases from the surface of the landfill. If there's a detection, that location is noted and then we've got to go back and repair that for 10 days and then we test it until it's been repaired. And if it can't get repaired, we have to notify the state and go into a proactive action program. So you heard earlier that there's no testing that's done on it, just everything goes. Well, it's not true. There is a lot of testing that goes on at the landfill and everything's been done in accordance with our permits and I would argue in some cases better than the permits require. We don't want to have an issue, we want to be proactive with any committees that could be happening at the site. So we have vested interest in being ahead of those types of things. By the way, I know we're talking a lot and you probably are all tired.
Still, I'm asking a ton of questions.
I could go all night, but I want to say too that, you know, I've worked for Casella since 1998, that was three years after we purchased this facility. And so I can't say I've been here for the whole time, but pretty close. And we have almost a perfect environmental compliance record, which is my job to make sure that compliance is what it's supposed to be, so I'm very proud of that. And I think it's important for you to know, you know, we're not a bad actor when it comes to solid waste management. We're a very good actor and improved that by our compliance history. So I think having the open door policy too helps people understand what's going on there. So the liners aren't leaking, we do monitor emissions from the landfill, from the flares and from the energy plant.
You say they're not leaking, you shake your head. Where are you getting your information, Charlie?
I got mine from the Conservation Law Foundation.
I'm just trying to, because I want to hear both sides.
Agency of Natural Resources last report said they were, and I can get your copy. And the online landfill is not producing the quality of PFOS that he's claiming is going in here. That also is a report from the U.S.
So you're mixing your messages. The online landfill, the online landfill is groundwater that's contaminated adjacent to the landfill, it's nothing to do with leachate, water treatment plant.
It's just going into the...
It's in a halo around the landfill and not moving this. So it's not going to the treatment plant. The leachate from the landfill, the lined landfill is going to the treatment plant.
I'll send you a copy.
Okay, because I keep hearing, you know, I'm just trying to get...
Well, you can also ask A&amp;R because they will confirm that the landfill is leaking.
They won't.
Yeah, you can ask them. Yeah, you can ask them. That it doesn't affect anything. You know, and it's.
I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to get into it.
No, 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 I was just trying to.
I do want to make some comments after this. I mean, I expected them to tell you they're doing a wonderful job. I also told you they're doing a pretty good job.
That's why I invited, I wanted to have both, you know.
Well, it's great. We really appreciate the opportunity. We like a nice structured format like this, where everybody can be civil.
Yeah.
It works.
We also encourage you, anytime you want to come and visit the facility, I mean, if you're just driving by and you stop by to see me and say, hey, listen, I want to go run around the facility, just let me know. Give me, at least give me 15 minutes, I'd love so, in case I'm not there, I can get there, but.
I think it's on my top 100 tourist.
No, but I'm just saying, anytime you guys want to come see the facility, we have an open door policy. We'll be more than, more than happy to show you.
I would have gone to the open house when I was tied up.
We have a lot of people there that were pretty giddy about what they, wow, this is not what I thought it was. In fact, Mr. Coe said the same thing to the vehicle going around the way, I was like, wow, this is, this is really something. You know, this is not what I expected.
Okay. Anything from council members? Okay. I've got three pages of numbers, and I'll try and update.
Yep, go right ahead.
You go for very long. Take your time. You came to us back on June 5th last year and made your presentation. You're asking right now for 22-acre expansion, is that it?
So, that's another thing that is a little bit confusing when stories aren't right right now. We're, we're asking for a 51-acre expansion. It's 22 years approximately of life, of extended life. And I should also point out that the expansion is, is a continuation of existing operations. We're not asking for more trash or different types of trash. It's the same operation over a longer period of time.
Okay, because on June 5th, you came before us and said you were going to be putting in a new cell that year, last year, you're just for 4.9 acres, consisting of phases four, then phase six, and then you're going to go back to phase five.
Okay, so, phase four is the 4.9-acre cell that we built. That was the last permitted cell at the facility, correct? We did build it, so now we're, we're done. We've developed the final phase, developed and constructed. And then the next expansion will be phase six, which is the expansion we're talking about, the 51-acre expansion that moves closer to the airport. And then after that, if we were able to get permits, we're moving back to phase five, which is a little out of order, number-wise, but phase five would be the last section of a landfill developed, and that's the online landfill relocation project that, if you, a lot of people are very familiar with that project. It's phase five, it's building a line landfill cell, one summer, second summer, excavating the online landfill, and any contaminated groundwater and soils beneath the landfill, moving that into a line landfill, restoring the old wetland limit, because the online landfills, unfortunately, were, a third of them were placed in wetlands. So, we're going to restore that wetland limit to what it once was, and then move the landfill further back.
And that's the area that everybody's calling the nettle.
Yes.
How many acres is that?
That's about 13 acres.
Okay.
About 500,000 tons of trash.
Bear with me, I'm just kind of letting down my, I think it's okay. Okay, the refuse that comes in from out of state, you say it's inspected, or it's supposed to be prior to it coming up here, but what's to say that, I mean, do you ever double-check what's in those trucks? I mean, if somebody sends out a shipment of car batteries, do you know it?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we, we do random load inspections, not only on the trash that comes out of, out of state, but the trash that comes from here. And the refuse is only from Vermont, this solid waste refuse is only from Vermont. It's the special waste that comes in from out of state.
Okay, and that special waste consists of?
Contaminated soil with gasoline or asbestos.
But that's it, it's limited to that?
No, there's, there could be a number of different things, sludge, wastewater treatment plant, sometimes there's brick or concrete rubble that's got mastic on it that might have some sort of contamination, can't go into ground somewhere, it's got to go to a line landfill, construction, special construction debris.
So, that's pretty much reduced as you would feel as well.
And there's a very detailed itemized list that the state has right on their website, all the materials that we take.
Okay. I assume that, obviously, you gave us those examples the last time you were here of the liners.
Yeah.
Have you found anything to date that deteriorates any of the liners, like Harden's at all, that would shorten the lifespan of that?
One thing. Well, maybe, maybe you've come across something else, sunlight, so you don't want to expose a liner to the sun.
But that's not a new discovery, I mean, that's been known. You asked whether something new has been discovered. That, that UV degradation has been known for decades.
Yeah.
Basically, some chemicals that we have.
No, so they, they extrapolate that in the laboratory. They, you know, I mean, if you think about it this way, your line re-durgence from the gasoline, those are high-density polyethylene containers, highly concentrated material, and the liners are made of that, that same base material, although it's not recycled material, it's virgin plastic. So, there's some differences there, but in principle, it's the same material.
Yeah, I can, I can add to that. Like, I was in a training, we do solid waste training across the country, and I'm talking to a gentleman, he had a presentation at the U.S. Athletics Institute, and he was talking about their struggle with trying to, you know, figure out how long these will last, because they haven't found an interim yet. And in his presentation, he's saying, now we're saying 750 years, we think they'll last, potentially longer, but we don't have testing out there for. You know, and he was like, I can't tell you, maybe it'll be millennia, maybe it'll be longer, but when that plastic is buried and exposed to the sunlight, and then, you know, in a place like it is above the landfill, that the lifespan is elongated tremendously versus being exposed to it.
And I think something else really important tonight, you understand, is 400 years, well, guess what? By then, the landfill's been kept enclosed with what? Plastic, keeping the rainwater out and the snow melt out. So, that leachate production, the 12 million gallons that we heard, that curve does this to eventually melt. So, if there's no liquid in there, there's no risk of leak in 700 years. And it's called a dry.
And your cover, does that affect the waste amount?
The black cover, yes. Yeah, that would be.
So, how often does that change?
So, we're, you know, we're, we thought maybe the stuff would last about 10 years, so it's going to last probably a little longer than that.
They're saying, they're saying, again, the institute said the same thing, at least 70 years exposed now is what they're saying. Exposed.
70?
70. But we're only using it as an interim, that's not our final cover.
Right. And also, too, you know, I say 10 years, that's when we think it's going to be time to remove that and put more waste in. So, like, the plastic will last a little longer than that, but it's only going to be there for a short period of time, because we don't need it there any longer than that.
And you have three levels of liners, correct? You've got your primary or secondary, and then you've got the one that's now over that clay line.
Well, we've, not exactly. We've got the two plastic liners, and then we add, Casella adds, not required by the state, a layer of geo-synthetic clay liner, which is below the entire primary liner, and its function is to hydrate. So, there's clay sandwiched between two layers of fabric, and if it got wet, you spilled this on it, the clay would swell to nine times its size. But in the, in the liner situation, if you have a leak, that's going to hydrate the GCL and seal the leak from below. That's a layer we put in that's not required, we think it's an extra level of protection. So, that's three layers. And then, we've got six feet of 1x10 of the minus.
At least five.
At least five, 70 per second soil, very tight soil.
Very low permeability soil.
And then the underdrain below that.
That's the fourth protective measure. Two plastic liners, the clay liner and the underdrain, very, you know, so four times redundant collection or containment system.
And also, it said that you monitor your sumps. How many sumps are there?
Seven.
Thank you.
You're good.
You're cautious.
Okay. Questions from any other council members?
I'm also paying attention, but I'm not a question.
Paying attention, very good information.
I know, it's a lot of information.
The underlying question is how do we alleviate the fears of our friends to the door? I have good friends in Maga who scowl at me every time I talk to them. They always bring up the landfill. In a conversation. I don't know how we alleviate those fears that something isn't going to happen to their drinking water supply out here, you know.
Well, one suggestion is that the, the permit that Pedro was about to receive, this, your new wastewater treatment plant discharge permit, is going to require this, Pedro was saying the acronym, wet testing, it's whole effluent toxicity testing, once a year. You know, the state is going to institute that at least once a year. So, we're going to get that annual checkup on the safety of your discharge. I think that's, and that's, you know, the Canadians have been asking for that. The answer is, it's coming.
Okay. No, I was just, you know, because.
That's sort of, I was trying to think, to put myself in your, in your seat, and I would say, it's going to be tested every year, and we'll send you the results.
And they're going to be looking at all these newer contamination materials.
And do they ever come down to your facility to see all this?
The Canadians? Oh, yeah, absolutely. So, we have the MRC come down, I'm not sure if they, so we have the city of Sherbrooke come down, we have MRC come down, I'm not sure if they attended the meeting, the dump meeting last Monday. Those folks are down, and OMCI did, that's a different group. They come down twice a year and attend our landfill oversight committee, exactly as the city does. And they're involved with everything, they've known about five, phase five, phase six for years, since 2005, and exactly what our plans have been for 15 years, and know exactly what we're doing. We just had it a week ago tomorrow down at the coveentry offices, and they were there. So, they're very much involved. This is your right, correct? They have, the one thing they've asked about is what's coming out of the pipe at the Newport City wastewater treatment plant, but that's very different from what's going on in the landfill. Two completely different things.
There are, I mean, they also, you know, so our company does this third-party independent water quality sampling around, we've been doing it twice a year for 25 years. We, you know, we generate a report like this every six months. They get sent a copy of this, either hard copy or electronically. So, they, they've been receiving these same water quality results that we, we also send to Casella, we send to the state, we send to anybody else who wants to read it, and they've been getting those for, for 35 years, 30 years.
Go ahead, go right ahead. Mr. Hine, would it be possible to get a copy of your report that you had earlier? Yes, that would be.
Yeah, you should just take it. I mean, I just printed it off the website, so.
Great, thank you.
We also do an annual workload inspection, the same group is invited to that, and a lot of them attempt. Laura's been on. We just have that in August, and it's a, you know, paddle up past the landfill and paddle back to look for impaction of the landfill.
All right. Any other questions from council members? Well, thank you. Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Hearing wet testing once a year, could it be more frequent, at least to begin with?
First of all, the state, when we jump in on it, first of all, the wet tests are going to have to be done by us, the state's going to mandate us to do it. They ain't going to be doing it, we'll be doing it, and we'll be sending it to our doorstep. The state's already recommended that we do it, there's like seven of them. So, we'll be getting results, and it's fairly expensive too, and all that. Something new on the new permit, which is a bunch of other stuff that we're going to be getting for our permit and all that. We haven't been doing yearly wet testing, and that's because of the state and EPA, it's not our fault, we weren't mandated to do it, so we haven't.
It's not reasonable.
But we will be doing yearly wet testing in our new permit.
That all the year?
That's what the state's telling us. You can do if you want, and we can do it more if you want, it's $2,100 a wire.
Okay. Very good.
Can I make a few comments?
Yeah, if you want to make some comments.
Yeah, I'm going to, you know, I'll, I'll reiterate again, the experts here from Casella have been very good about telling you how wonderful a job it is. And I'm telling you, before I finish my comment, according to what they're required to do by the state, they do do it. So, that, at the end of my comments. Our problem is what the state is requiring. There are way too many wrong ones. I'm going to make some quick comments, and then you guys can go on your own, as I do, to the EPA.gov site, look up line landfill, look up leachate, and do some reading about it. One of the things you will say, you will hear from the federal EPA is that all landfills leak, all man-made material used to make liners leak, will fail, the wells will fail. Just, you, you go on, read it for yourself. We can have this argument back and forth. That's on the EPA website. Very easy to find, very easy to look through. As far as leak, leaking from the landfill, I will have Jen Dugan from the Conservation Law Foundation send you her information that she gathered from recent results that contradict that. PFOAs, they even admitted they're an unknown. Nobody knows what level's safe. We asked the A&amp;R, Agency of Natural Resources, at our meeting on Monday, what level's safe. Well, right now, it's 20 parts per trillion. They just lowered it from.
70.
From 70 to 20, but they're still not sure, just a guess. Scrap shoot, it's their best, educated best.
Other states, Michigan has a seven parts per trillion standard.
Right. So, this is all really, really new stuff. It's proven to be in the leachate that you are treating. The leachate that you are treating, they even admit it can't do the chemists, or Pedro admitted, one or the other.
Charlie, we had a test done on PFOA, the state has got a program right now where they, they sent out an independent company, Weston Sampson, who samples on PFOA and all wastewater plants.
Right, we have the results.
Yeah.
I know what the results are. And they're, they're, they're there, correct?
Yes, they are, but they, but they don't know where they're coming from either, though, Charlie. The questions I ask are probably because we take stuff from all different sources, that where is it coming from?
Makes my point even better. They don't know. They don't know that they're, you know.
They're very uneducated.
I mean, we, I can debate this with Pedro, but I don't know, I just want to make some points. What we want is, we want access to take the samples. Everything they told you is, we test for this, we test for that, and we walk the site, we test the air, we test the water, we test, we test, we test, we test. Same thing, I'll tell you again, if Monsanto was testing for the GMOs, I wouldn't do it. Not saying these guys aren't honest and doing their job, they've got the same guy doing it for 25 years, somebody they pay. I mean, we, we have a problem with it, the Conservation Law Foundation has a problem with it. The guy that I talked to at the Agency of Natural Resource understands that we have a problem with it, and that's part of the reason why, right now, that, that permit is on hold. The wet test was just ordered, and the reason it was just ordered was because of the Conservation Law Foundation's programs, just to get this thing stopped. Prior to that, and I told you, the last time they tested it was 2008 or '09. So they, they told me it's 2009, it's nine years ago. Nine years. The out-of-state waste are also monitored by you guys, and they're monitored by the company, what they told us at the meeting is that the companies that put the stuff in have to monitor the waste. So we weren't real comfortable with that either. So all we're looking for, the other thing about the odor, I'm not, I'm not nearly as, and I live up on that Maga give, so I smell this on a pretty regular basis. I'm not worried about the odor, I'm worried about what's in the odor. And when I asked the air quality control division for the Agency of Natural Resources, they told me, the only required requirement you guys have for your solid waste permit is for odor. I'm worried about the chemicals that are in the odor. And if you go on the EPA website and ask about odors from landfills, possible toxins, go on the EPA.gov, look me from Charlie Prano, and read it. And if that doesn't scare you, then great, but it scares the hell out of me, scares the hell out of me. So that's, that's my comments on that.
So you don't have, I'm going back to my air pollution days, I'm sure from my meteorology class where I did air pollution samples, you don't have systems that test the particles? I mean, particulates of like, you know, do you have that type of air quality monitoring?
Well, we monitor the, if you're, if you're asking, we monitor gas quality in that regard. We also, we take bag samples of the landfill gas.
You have, you take samples of the actual...
Of the landfill gas itself, yes.
Yeah, okay, no, so you are, am I asking it the right way?
At the understack testing of the agency's apps.
That's right.
Once a year, maybe a year.
Okay, so you are actually doing color of the air pollution test, I'm going back to my meteorology days.
That's right, that's right, yeah, yeah, you're right, yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
I don't know what you'll find on the EPA website about that, but this is a state-of-the-law air pollution control jurisdiction from the EPA for air quality.
I give it, the guy's paying for that, who told me?
Bobby Elliott.
They don't, Bobby Elliott, sorry. They don't, they don't require a testing for that.
So what's in the...
What's in the odor? I asked them if they had monitors that went up above the landfill, they said...
No, we don't have monitors for them.
Testing the air quality is... I asked them if they knew exactly what was in there, they said no.
I'd just like to respond briefly to his statement about my ethics.
I'm not questioning your ethics.
Well, I think you did. I'm a certified professional geologist, certified by the American Institute of Professional Geology. We have an ethics conduct requirement. We are ethical, I've been doing this for 30 years, I'm proud of doing it for 30 years. The laboratories that these go to are all certified and second-party tested, third-party tested. The companies that are sending this, these out-of-state waste, are having their samples analyzed by laboratories that are certified to give reliable results. So I'm a little offended by the claim of me crooking the books. It does not happen.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. I just had a philosophical statement, and I think it's at the basis of why we formed this group, and that is, waste is a behavior. We're all responsible for the waste we create, or should be. And we find it socially unjust, really, that all the rest of Vermont's waste should be coming here. It should be handled where it's generated. People should take the responsibility, counties and county government should be taking that responsibility. We're not responsible for Chindon County's waste in Coventry or in the Northeast Kingdom. This is absurd, it's nonsense. And all the trucking that releases all this pollution, these round-trip trucks. I travel Route 14 most every day from Hartwick up to Albany, and it's not like the roads used to be. The roads were, were divine 30 years ago, they ain't anymore. They are pounded to hell. And that, and the little towns, Irisburg and Albany and Crasberry, even though it's on the edge of Route 14, the character of those towns has changed. You hear these trucks rumbling. My son lives in Johnson, he hears the trucks come up 100A, or 100B it is, the crosscut, to 100 and then 58, and he has a trucker friend, not, not MBI trucker friend, he says, when he sleeps, he can tell when a truck's overloaded, and his house is vibrating most every night. He just has that sense. So it's changed the neighborhoods. We're, we're getting the trash, the Northeast Kingdom, because we don't have the population or the political clout or the economy to defend ourselves, we're getting it, and we have to put a stop to this.
On the Chitlin part of it, they, they, Chitlin Solid Waste bought a piece of property that it approved for solid waste, and their reason for not doing it was because they didn't think they would get enough trash to make an economic model. So if you buy that, that, you, you heard that at the meeting on Monday, too. And I will say that most of this information that I put out there was not contradicted by the Agency of Natural Resources at the Monday meeting. These guys were asked to attend the next one.
Okay. I wasn't opening it up, the questions, this was a presentation for the council. If there was a motion made, then I would, but I don't know if there's anyone who's going to make any motion tonight, there's too much information. We've got to do a lot of homework on mine. I know I, before I would support yay or nay on anything, I want to do some homework. I'll be talking to some people in the state, but I have to read...
Why don't you come visit us? You know, it's part of your homework, if you want to come visit us.
I may take another tour, it's been a couple of years, it's been another year, I think, since Ronnie brought me up. But philosophically, I, I agree about us taking all the trash, I've been opposed to that forever. I think Chitlin County, what really frosted me recently was, when they up their recycling fees, what we have to pay, here we are, taking all of Chitlin County's trash, yet they jack the recycling that you, we all have to pay. And that, that frosted me when I, when they came to the council, and, you know, and I still haven't gotten over that one, because they, because they raised the rates even more. The only thing we got out of that was, they don't give bronchitis discount anymore.
I don't think, I don't think anybody really came that's very happy.
No, I was furious when that came up, because, you know, I agree philosophically, I think what really bothers me the most, too, is 22 years, or however long your permit's for, the state has no plans. They hadn't even thought about it. And I think that, to me, is wrong. They should be doing the long-term, because 22 years doesn't take long. In grand scheme of things, it doesn't take long. So in 22 years, do you have land to expand even more, or are you full-fou by then?
Oh, we've had phase five, so that would be the last phase of development, that's probably a six to eight-year, landfill sub. So all total, we're talking 30, 35 years, if we were to get a permit for everything. No guarantees with that.
Currently, your permit is good for another four years, is that correct?
No, that's a good question, I don't know off the top of my head. So it was issued in 2014, I think it's, so the state issues 10-year permits. So even though I've got 20, say 22 years capacity, if this permit is issued, if for some reason in 10 years we become bad behaved, or our environmental standards go out the door, the state won't issue another permit. So if they issue permits in 10 acre chunks, how you doing, has technology changed, okay, everything's good, they'd issue another permit for 10 years, it's in 10-year chunks.
Thank you. All right, very good. Anything else, I think, council members, then? Thank you. Thank you, thank you. We have our homework to do now, too. Okay. Thank you again. Recreation Committee bylaws review and vote.
Anything harder than water?
Anything harder than water? No, we don't have anything harder than water.
Not here.
It's hard water.
You've got it tested first.
That comes from the Mont Heretics, so who knows?
That's tested after you leave, I do know that.
Thank you.
Well, Jim, we went back to the 90s.
Huh?
We went back to the 90s.
I thought the same.
Whole time, keep an eye on it, it was waste district, recycling, and landfill.
And when I first was on the council in 97 to 2000, it was landfill expansions at that time. Okay, the next, the item we're on now is recreation committee bylaws. Jess did, she could not be here this evening, she did send us the copy, I think she incorporated the changes that we asked for, and I think they're, once again, like we already, I think they're well done for the committee. And so we would, if the council so chooses, we'd entertain a motion to approve them.
I'll make a motion to approve recreation committee bylaws.
A motion to be made, is there a second?
No.
Made, seconded, discussion? Yes.
If the recreation committee had been active, but they have been involved in policies like the ones for events and the ones for fees?
I, in the past, what is it? Ma'am, I can't, couldn't hear you.
I know, it's like it's still... The question was, if there had been an active committee for the right department, and it's still not clear why there wasn't, because there had been one, it was still had been one, would they have been involved in creating the policy for events and the policies around fees for the next year?
Recreation Committee?
Mm-hmm.
Judging from what happened when she, my wife was on and I was the liaison there, they would have had some comments, or through air, they may not come to the council meeting and done it, but they had gone to the recreation director over the liaison at that time, throughout the things.
So they would have been involved to get at least participating?
I suspect in some form, they may not have been here for the discussion. And the discussion as a committee and forward sort of liaison.
Right, so I find it disturbing that what had been an active recreation committee suddenly disappeared into the ozone. And I remember that when, just after the election, there was an attempt to, so we say eradicate Planning Commission and the DRB and the Recreation Committee. Now, the DRB and Planning Commission both fought back and said, no, you can't send us out on hiatus and then regroup. But that, there wasn't anybody here to stand up for the rec committee. I'm just a little concerned about that. When policies are created, and yet those who are supposed to be involved are not involved, it's a little disturbing.
Anything else?
I share your concerns, and my hope is that, once the bylaws are approved and a committee is formed and an active people who want to participate on a rec committee are engaged and involved, if there are things that they don't agree with that have happened over the past however long, then hopefully they would advocate for change.
They can also say, what the Recreation Committee was established, Dan can, Dan was back when we were here, but all people, that committee was established to put on events, put on the event, man them, so the Recreation Department didn't have to. And anything left over after the expense went into a rec trust fund to use for other events. Didn't go to the operation of the Rec Department in any way, shape, or form. That's what that committee was established for. And back then, you had a group of very dedicated people, very dedicated people, ran these events, manned them, ran them, did everything for the Rec Department. I mean, Reg and Brian would be there, but they did not run the event.
But they weren't, the committee wasn't, was the committee involved in the actual recreation fees? That was a department, that was Harry, Harry, Brian, and Reg.
The Recreation, I don't remember any Recreation Committee document back then.
There were, there was fees back then.
No, 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 were they involved in the setting of the fees for the Rec Department that the council approved?
Well, I thought back then they were involved in just about everything.
Okay, I'm just trying to get some history.
As a committee, they knew what was going on, they got to make recommendations, they got to do things. They weren't just this committee that sat in the back room and said yes to everything that was going to be done.
They were involved in anything they wanted to go on. They weren't, the only fees back then would have been field use fees maybe.
Reg Shear wanted a, I think Reg Shear was the one that instituted a $25 fee for the, for the gazebo, so it would be up, kept up at that time, that's quite a few years ago.
Yeah, but that wouldn't have been a Rec Committee decision, that would have been a council. That's nothing the Rec Committee came up with, that was something Reg Shear took. I didn't go to the Rec Committee.
The only thing I like about this is, I like that line, as you put it here. And, and we've got to hold it to her, because it says, once the bylaws have been approved by your council, we will begin the recruitment process. And I think I mentioned in maybe at least two meetings, it's really going to start recruiting people, because you have to have a committee, a committee is not a phone call to somebody that used to be on it.
Correct. You put an ad in the paper, looking for members of the Rec Committee, you put it on social media, you put it wherever, but it was only until, I'd say, the last three, four years, maybe five, that the committee was in action?
It was always, well, yeah.
Yeah, you know, I'm...
There's always been a committee, there's been a committee for years, something like that.
Right, but it was only the last few years that you came...
Or they do anything or not, that's...
Less active. A bustler.
And I think Andy worked well with me, from what I know.
Yes.
Talking to people who are on that committee.
Okay, so we had...
A little bit like it was years ago.
So we had a motion and a second. Any other questions on the bylaws?
Nicole had her hand up, I don't know.
Oh, I'm sorry, she said...
I know.
Charles, get out, I was trying to see you.
You know, if you really wanted people that were there, we're still here, Lee Brinmeyer, Bard, I still call him genius, Ronnie Bushy, me, it was Ray Ladoo, Steve Edgely, you can get five or seven. When we were on, it was great, because they had a liaison, like, okay, let's just say Charlie Prano was the best for one year, and then the next year, we have someone else. It was, it was great. They did the talking for us, and what we're, we're, Harry would say was, you guys are so strong, and you're good at it, I will not give the council a nest, one penny for this committee. So whatever you guys do, make sure you can have the money and the doings. And we had supplies, but we also had the Chamber, that were our best friends, Val Wipple's crew, we worked together. But Harry never missed a meeting, he never missed, whatever we had on for an activity, he was there at all times, at all. We never knew if he'd be there in the morning, but he was there, he was there when we arrived, he was there when we left. And it was just, like I said, you could just get the same group that's right here now, and it was, we just brought our families with us, and we brought our friends with us, and everyone did say we did more than we did, we were all in, we were all in. And I did like the liaison, because he really was there to help us.
My point was, the council never gave us funds.
No.
They raised their own money, put on their own...
That's why the trust fund was set up. Okay, anything else, then? All those in favor say aye. Oppose, ice habit, motion carries. Mr. May, may I have a copy? You can have mine. Is that yours? Held together the rubber band?
It's, it's to protect it, gets from being...
Okay, the next item, new track, new track loader bed. And we received, Tom's here, we received four bids, I know I came in and opened them. Tom, would you like to just kind of go over it?
Well, you're, you're going to write down that, oh, idiot. It's replacing a rubber tire skid steer that we have had since 2007. It's no longer runnable. We run it on the grates, but it's on its last life. This piece of equipment actually is heavily used as a job, and we do a lot of our own construction jobs. As I put in the memo, we'd like to get a power rake, which most people like noise, like a Harley rake, which would help reduce the labor, putting lawns back together, backfilling the ditch, also put in the, the dozer blade, which, say it again, would help us on construction jobs. Snow pusher, we'd love to try different means of cleaning a practical one, so that's another item I would sort of add to it. And again, we can still utilize that $30,771 I slapped sitting on a table with the USD Agra, to the good portion of the skid steer itself. And we did take a little bit, we'd like to, I don't know what was the worst bid, this equipment.
So the total is $66,900, less the $30,000?
Correct. Correct.
Question from council members. Mr. Shanet?
Tom, the attachments. Did you get pricing for the attachments for all of these different?
I did. I did.
And was it basically the same amount for all the models? Or was...
All the bits? They were... Oh, we're going to say that again.
These attachments are all $17,000. So were the attachments basically the same amount for each one of these other three?
They were all within hundreds of dollars, actually. Yeah. They were still low. I did a spreadsheet and I should have brought it. They were still low bid, no matter how I figured it.
Even with all the attachments?
With all the attachments, yeah.
And are you expecting to sell or trade in the gap?
I didn't even put it out there with them because it's not running. We'll end up selling it. Actually, the last few pieces of equipment, we put it on Greg's, we've got more money for them than we would if we just put it in the paper here.
I can attest to that. I sell stuff out there.
That's what he uses for the sand and the salt for the garage?
The skid steer.
Oh, you use the skid steer for that?
The skid steer we currently have, we bought to multi-use. We bought a snowball or board to put it on the sidewalks. It didn't work the best. And then, you know, because we bought such a small piece of equipment to fit on the sidewalks, it really didn't... We couldn't utilize it in other ways. This one, we want to help us with our projects.
So that 96-gig snow pusher, is that like I see on those big tractors up there?
Well, Gray's use one. They use theirs down at Pick and Shovel. Andrea Kucher does pollings.
Yeah, I can see...
They're amazing.
Yeah, I can see you...
This actual skid steer can load a 10-wheel dump truck. Pretty impressive.
It's nice that we had that money left over from the grant.
I know.
Go and cut it in half, the cost.
A piece of equipment is the key to doing a good job. Good equipment gives you a good job.
Yes. Any other questions? Then we would need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of... What are we buying here?
The Kubota SBL 75.
Yeah. All right.
There's a picture of that.
Could you point at the story of just the attachments?
With the attachments.
With the attachments.
So motion made. Is there a second?
All seconded.
Made and seconded, discussion? Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Ayes have it. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Moving on, Mr. Johnson, new business. Mr. Charbonneau, new business. New business. Seven, seven, right?
Oh, no. I will not change my name.
Oh, okay. I wasn't sure. I'll try.
I did get married, but...
Okay.
Well, I want to be sure. Thank you for asking.
Mr. Shanet?
Yes, one item.
Yes.
And this might be for Tom, or it might be for the state. I'm not sure which. But on the corner of Indian Point Street and Elm, there's a guy wire that comes down from the pole, and it's only about a foot at best from the edge of the road. It's got a yellow plastic sheath on the wire, but is there some sort of reflective tape or something that we could put on there? Or is that the responsibility of the state for that? Or would that be... I should say B and C?
It'd be B and C. I'll take a look at it and get a hold of it.
Okay, great. Thank you. Let's go ahead, Mr. May. New business?
Nothing to say.
Nothing to say? Okay. Moving on. Old business? Mr. Johnson? Any old business?
I have nothing.
Anything?
Yeah, I was approached a couple of times this past week by some voters saying that the city council seems to be losing its way by some of the statements that we've been making towards our department heads and city manager, city clerk. And I think maybe they're right, and we should probably endeavor to probably curb our detrimental statements and maybe do that when we're not in session. That's something I have to say on old business.
Okay. Anything, Mr. Ross? Please take notes. No old business?
No old business.
I'm surprised that they're making definite statements about the city clerk. Like that, I'm...
Me, too.
I know.
All right. I'll keep... All right. The next council meeting will be Monday, October 1st, 6:30 p.m. Now we need a motion to adjourn at 8:25.
Soon.
Motion made. Is there a second?
All seconded.
Made and seconded, discussion. Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we're adjourned.